One more call for Mr. Alarcon. Mr. Reyes. Mr. Smith and Mr. I'm sorry, Mr. Weiss. All right, while we're waiting to achieve a quorum, I would like to start the presentations. And our... I believe we're awaiting the arrival of Mr. Wesson's guest for this morning. So we will go to the next presentation. If Mr. Huizar is ready. Is Mr. Are you ready, Mr. Huizar? With your presentation? Why don't we take you then? From Council District 14, Council Member Jose Huizar.
Thank you very much, Madam President. And I'm here today to recognize a wonderful individual who has done so much to benefit the children of the city of Los Angeles and Southern California. And we've recognized SEA, Solid Dad Enrichment Action before. The City Council has applauded the work they've done to promote education in their work through their charter schools and also to reduce gang violence in their work with at-risk youth. But today, we're here to recognize a great leader for this organization. Every great organization has a great leader. And today, I'm here to announce that Cesar Calderon has been awarded the 2007 James Irvine Foundation Leadership Award. Let's give him a big round of applause. I wanted to mention a little bit about SEA. SEA started over 30 years ago. And it started in 1972 when 12 women from East Los Angeles began a movement to address gang violence in their community. As a result, these women supported a support network and organized their local community. Mr. Calderon first got involved in SEA in 1991 as a result of his younger brother, a troubled homeless teenager who today is one of the organization's success stories. And under his leadership, SEA became incorporated in 1993. He has transformed the organization into a comprehensive youth program and one of the state's largest charter schools focused exclusively at high-risk students. Moreover, Mr. Calderon recognized the need to not only educate our children through a traditional curriculum, but he recognized the need that most of these students need some type of special support, specialized services to ensure that they get to school ready to learn. So today, SEA offers career planning, substance abuse counseling and prevention, job training and counseling, teen pregnancy prevention, college preparatory programs, parenting classes for parents, and the list goes on. And as a result of this, over 90% of students graduate from these schools when in fact many of them had previously been written off. I think that's a huge success. And here we are today recognizing the achievements not only of SEA but of Cesar Calderon like who like I mentioned has been awarded the 2000 James Irvine Foundation Leadership Award. A very competitive award, I may add. The award is presented annually to individuals who work has been significant in scope and addresses an issue that is critical to California's future. It is effective in achieving positive change. It is innovative and directly improves people's lives. It is inclusive and helps build bridges among people with different viewpoints or different backgrounds and substantial in that the individual's personal leadership has made a distinct contribution to the project's advancement. Ladies and gentlemen, let me introduce to you a great leader in our community, someone who is quite quiet at times when I see him at events, but someone who is thinking a lot on how to continue to improve the lives of our children and in this case particularly our at-risk youth. Ladies and gentlemen, Cesar Calderon. Cesar.
Good morning, Assistant Pro Tem Jan Perry. It is an honor for me to be acknowledged for being the first Latino immigrant to receive the James Irvine Foundation Award. Council Member Huizar, thank you for nominating me. And also thank you for supporting Solid Dad Enrichment Action's mission, which reaches out to youth beyond their educational needs, including a holistic approach and using a system of wraparound services. I also want to thank council members Earl Wesson, Bernard Parks, who's not here, Richard Alarcon, Ed Reyes, Jan Perry, Tom LaBunch, in whose districts we have schools. And we thank them for their support. 16 years ago, when I joined the mothers and the pioneers who founded the Solid Dad Enrichment Action program, I was captivated and inspired by their compassion, passion and commitment to serving high-risk youth in their communities. That continues to be SEA's mission. And I want to say something. I believe that in order to address dropout rates, increase graduation rates, we need to include as part of our strategy, a holistic approach and comprehensive models. This is including wraparound services, after-school services, parenting education, gang intervention, and all kinds of services. Just be aware that this award also represents the efforts of many leaders in our organization. It represents the efforts of educators, counselors, parenting educators, gang intervention workers, and a set of wraparound services staff that works at each of the schools every day, providing positive alternatives to high-risk youth. I would like for them to stand up, they're right behind me. I thank them for all of their support, everyone here. Thank you.
You're welcome. Congratulations. Mr. Huizar.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And now we will hear briefly from Amy Dominguez, a program director at the James Irvine Foundation. Amy Rodriguez Dominguez.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. The James Irvine Foundation is the state's largest multi-issue foundation focused exclusively on the state of California. And last year, we created the James Irvine Foundation Leadership Awards to recognize and support individuals who are advancing innovative and effective solutions to critical issues for our state's future. This year, a distinguished selection committee identified Cesar Calderon as one of six recipients among nearly 300 nominations. These individuals are successfully tackling some of our state's toughest challenges and we believe there's much to learn from state and local policymakers and others in the field about their work. As a result, we are providing a grant in the amount of $125,000 to SEA Enrichment Action to support its activities. In addition, we're providing communications assistance to help share with others the lessons about this outstanding and successful program. It is our honor to have the opportunity to recognize someone of the caliber of Cesar Calderon and we thank you for taking the time to recognize him today. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Dominguez. And I want to thank the Irvine Foundation for recognizing the work that individuals like Mr. Calderon are doing because in fact, many of us know that one of the most important public policy issues that this country faces next to national security is the education of our young people in large urban centers. We often talk about the competitiveness of this nation in the future. And if we look at where most of our children in our future workforce is getting educated, it's largely minority children in large urban centers such as Los Angeles. And I think that is a very tough nut to crack as to how we go about and ensure these children that they achieve. But what Mr. Calderon has done is had shown us that irrespective of a child's background, whether they come from a low-income, high-income families or irrespective of their race, every child can achieve, even those who have fallen down, gotten up, dusted themselves off. Mr. Calderon, on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, thank you for your work and congratulations for being a recipient of the James Irvine Foundation.
And we have Council Member Reyes has some comments.
Thank you, Council President. I just wanted to rise and first congratulate Cesar for all his hard work. The James Irvine Foundation, one of the major philanthropic groups in California, not the country, to actually provide this kind of support to an issue that most philanthropic groups tend to glean over. When we talk about direct intervention and support systems, it's obviously the government is overwhelmed. In this day and age, when cutbacks have been hurt, have been hurting many organizations for the private sector to step up in this manner is very, very critical. And thank you, Councilman Huizar, for not only nominating Cesar but working with him since the early 90s and watching this great evolution of responsibilities, authority, and discretion and be able to perform at the center that you are truly is something that many of those that are following behind you will not only observe, but hopefully learn from. So thank you so much. Have a great day and again, thank you, James Irvine.
Thank you, Mr. Huizar. Congratulations. Our next presentation, Councilmember Jan Perry.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. We're just making the transition here.
We have great patience, no problem.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. And it is today with great pleasure that I present to you the members of the Yonsei Basketball Association. All five rows, come on. Don't be shy. Come on out. They have a huge contingent here today. The Yonsei Basketball Association is a nonprofit corporation founded in 1993 by a group of Southern California Japanese-Americans interested in establishing a cultural exchange program for middle-school-aged young people. The objective of the Yonsei Basketball Association is to provide 13- and 14-year-old boys and girls active in Southern California to have the opportunity to experience their heritage and cultural roots firsthand. As part of the program, players travel to prominent cities in Japan where they participate in a goodwill exchange of ideas and cultures by participating in a homestay and by playing basketball games with young people from Japan. Program participants are selected for academic excellence, positive attitudes, and sound basketball skills. Upon selection to the team, they participate in fundraising and other activities in preparation for their trip to Japan each August. Participation in the association is a tremendous experience for players because it allows them to appreciate the importance of family values, community participation, and cultural heritage. And I'm very proud of these fine young people standing with me today because they have worked extremely hard, not only in raising money but in improving their athletic skills. And I am confident that they will represent us very, very well in their competition. So I wanted to wish them the best of luck for a very safe and fun trip and just to recognize a few of them and if their coach would step forward for the boys' team and the girls' team, their head coach Steve Uemoto and for the boys' team and head coach Stephanie Kawasaki. Give them a big hand. And just to have them say a few words about their team members, I would appreciate it. Who'd like to go first? Lady, that's very good. I like that. Good. Okay.
Good morning, everyone. This year, we're taking a group of 12 girls and 12 boys to Japan, to Shimane, to play basketball. We've been working really hard since February and we're really excited to go. All the girls have been working hard, all the boys have been working very hard. So wish us luck and I hope we represent you well.
Good morning. A couple of months ago, we got together and I made one request of my basketball team and that was for them to grow. And a couple of them have grown a couple more inches, so I think we'll do very well in Japan. Thank you.
Okay, in the true spirit of competition, thank you very much. And I have two young people who'd like to say a few words?
Good morning. And thank you for this opportunity to present this year's Yonsei team. Being here today is a great honor for me and my teammates. My name is Myles Nelson and I'm from Lake Baobab. We will be traveling to Japan next month as part of a, as goodwill ambassadors representing the greater Los Angeles area in the USA. And my teammates and I are here to tell you a little bit about the Yonsei program and the trip we are about to make.
Hi, I'm Kelly Shimizu and I'm the girls' team captain. The Yonsei basketball team is two teams, actually, a boys' and girls' team, and we're representing the USA. So that's pretty interesting. And we're leaving in August for Japan. And we're not only playing basketball, but we'll also get to sightsee and stay with Japanese families and also get to learn more about our culture and heritage. And we will be visiting Shimane, which is Matsue in Okin Island, and we'll also be visiting Hiroshima, Kyoto, and Tokyo.
Hello, I'm Mark Loper from Huntington Beach and I'm the boys' team captain. Although this trip is for goodwill basketball, being selected for the Yonsei team wasn't just based on our basketball skills. To even be eligible for the team, we had to have a grade point average of 3.0 or higher as well as two letters of recommendation and charity work under our belts. We had to write an essay about why we should volunteer our time to help out and undergo a rigorous basketball trial. We, as well as our parents, were interviewed to determine our level of commitment. While our basketball skills counted for a lot, what counted most was our interview and what kind of citizens we are. Most of us reminded our parents to do well in their interview so they wouldn't mess it up for us.
Hi, I'm Kelsey Lee from South Pasadena. Over the past few months, we have done a great deal of fundraising. We have sold raffle tickets, t-shirts, and also sold food at the Family Fun Fest in Little Tokyo. We recently had our annual golf tournament where there was food, a raffle, and a silent auction. We have an exhibition game on August 5th where we will be playing the last year's Yonsei team. And as well as the results of the raffle will be announced then. Shortly after, we will be leaving for Japan on August 14th for about two weeks. And there, we will be playing about four games.
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Takigawa from Irvine.
Second, Council President, could we ask the audience or the folks in the council to quiet down? We have youngsters presenting to us and you can hear the conversations on the sides more than you can hear the presentation. And we should give them that respect as they speak.
Sergeant Arms can please make sure that we have silence in the council chambers. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Hi, I'm Jeffrey Takigawa from Irvine. And also, over the past few months, my teammates and I have gotten a chance to know each other better. We come from South Orange County all the way up to Camarillo. Since we don't see each other very often and we're all friends, it's great to be able to play basketball or just hang out together. One thing we'd like to talk about is what we'd like to do in Japan. Some kids say they'd like to try new foods, while others say they will really enjoy shopping in Tokyo. A few of us just want to play basketball and see how good the players are in Japan. We all agree that we'd like to learn more about our heritage.
I'm Dani Amada from Arcadia. One of the things that we were able to do as a team and as friends was visit the Japanese-American National History Museum in Little Tokyo. We received tourism volunteers and we learned about the history of Japanese Americans, a lot of which is about World War II and internment camps. We were all affected by the hardships our ancestors went through and how they fought through it. We also learned a lot about the Japanese culture from our parents and grandparents. They really tried to teach us about where we come from in the Japanese culture. Being able to go to Japan to see how they live and act, to learn about our heritage firsthand, and to actually experience it will be amazing. And now I'd like to introduce our president, Mr. David Teragaw.
To all the council members, I want to thank you for this special opportunity for all our participants. I also want to thank Jan Perry. I know she's very active in our community. One thing that I think we've neglected to explain is Yonsei actually translates into fourth generation. So although these are not all fourth-generation participants, I think you're going to find that we've given them an opportunity to have an experience for a selected few. I think that they're going to make the best of it. Obviously, part of the selection process, as they've indicated, we're looking for good representatives for kids in Japan to see what kids in Southern California actually do. And so obviously, it's in everyone's best interest that we pick good citizens. As far as board members, we're very fortunate because in the selection process, we're very fortunate that we have all good families. I think that you'll see that we give them some opportunity and guidance, but it's really the participants and if you look back, the families that are joining them, they're the ones that do all the work. So I am confident that this group and every group that we've had will grow up to be very respectable citizens. And if you see their honesty and their responsibility and their work ethic, you would have the same feelings that I would. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And that completes my first presentation. And I'll ask the team members to join me in the back room for just a minute. My next presentation is to recognize the sponsors of the 12th Annual Central Avenue Jazz Festival that will take place this week. Jazz Festival that will take place this weekend in front of the historic Dunbar Hotel. I want to recognize representatives today from, I hope they're here. Okay, come on up. Disney, AEG, KJazz, 88.1, Washington Mutual, and NBC Universal. Come on up. With their support, we have been able to continue to present the Central Avenue Jazz Festival free of charge to the public. This is a unique cultural event that pays tribute to the jazz music, African-American culture, and the historic Dunbar Hotel on Central Avenue. The Jazz Festival is a two-day event that will take place this weekend. It will provide, we will be providing food, fun areas for children, and performances from some jazz greats such as Phil Rannellen, Arthur Blythe, Charles McPherson, Sandra Booker's Underground Movement, just to name a few. This is an action-packed weekend that is fun for the entire family, and each year, it becomes more and more special when you realize the special people that you can actually sit there, very close, watch, hear, watch perform, free of charge. It's nothing short of amazing. But of course, we could not continue to provide this outstanding free community event without the generosity and support of these sponsors standing behind me today. And all the sponsors here today have sponsored the festival by providing more than $1,000 that has contributed greatly to its overall success, so I wanted to personally thank them all again, Disney, AEG, KJazz, Washington Mutual, and NBC Universal. Their contributions have helped to make this year's Central Avenue Jazz Festival a world-class event, and I look forward to working with them next year to continue to celebrate jazz on Central Avenue. With us today is Deborah Davis from Emerging Markets, Washington Mutual, Martha Salcedo from AEG, Andrea Gibson from Disney, Michael Levine from KJazz, and J.C. O'Connell from NBC Universal, and if you would join me in giving them a big hand, I would appreciate it.[741.51][741.51](APPLAUSE). All right, why don't you two speak for just a second?
Good morning. On behalf of the Walt Disney Company, we're happy to support the 12th Annual Central Avenue Jazz Festival. As you know, Disney is dedicated to brightening the lives of children and families in the area of compassion, environment, learning, and the arts. This community festival not only celebrates the art of music, but most importantly, it celebrates the community, and children and family can enjoy this festival together. So, we're proud to be a sponsor for this wonderful community effort. Thank you.
And on behalf of Disney, AEG, KJazz, and NBC Universal, we'd like to thank Council Member Perry for your support in keeping jazz alive. It's very important. I'm with KJazz at 8.1, and there's fewer and fewer jazz outlets in this world, and it's just, we'd like to thank you for keeping it alive. Thank you.
Thank you for your support, and look forward to seeing everybody on Central Avenue starting this Saturday at 12 noon for the kickoff ceremony. Last year, over the course of two days, we had 35,000 people on Central Avenue, so I hope all of you will join us, and thank you again to all of our sponsors.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Congratulations to all. Our next presentation will be Herb Wesson. Councilmember Herb Wesson with a friend.
Good morning, Mr. President and members. Today, again, is my favorite day. It's, we'll get a little closer. It's Friday. It's not only Friday, it is Pet Adoption Friday. And this bundle of energy that we have right here, her new name is Jazzy Jan. Jazzy Jan, did you hear that, Ms. Perry? Jazzy Jan. Jazzy Jan is beautiful. She's only four months old. She's a mixed shepherd. She's looking for a home, and being an owner of former shepherds, I tell you, if you have children or you want somebody to protect you, want somebody to love you, you don't do any better than this. She's very excited to be here, and she's got her little scarf on because she wanted to dress up for you. Anyway, those of you that are interested in giving Jazzy Jan a home, all you have to do is call 888-452-7381. Here at the City of Los Angeles, we've been doing this pet adoption program for over a year, and I'm proud that we have a 100% adoption rate. The majority of the dogs and cats and even rabbits that we have brought into the City Hall have been adopted by members of the city family. So, please, we want to keep our 100% record going. Look at Jazzy Jan here. She's looking for a home. Lot of energy, great dog. You couldn't find a better dog to have with your family than a mixed shepherd. If you're looking for unconditional love, if you're looking for an animal that's going to love you on good days and bad days, Jazzy Jan is that animal. So, with that said, please, if anybody is interested, we're going to keep Jan here, Jazzy Jan, for another half hour. You can call, again, 888-452-7381. And if someone is watching this out in television land, and you discover that Jan has been adopted, don't despair. We have six shelters and hundreds and hundreds of great companion animals that are looking for a home. So, I say to you, I urge you, when you adopt one of these pets, in essence, what you are doing is you are saving a life. So, I urge you to save a life. You want Jan, call 888-452-7381. Jan, do you have anything you want to say? Bill says she says woof, woof. Great imitation, Mr. Rosendahl. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. And that phone number was up on the screen for our viewers at home, so please call. I think Mr. Wesson has 100% record on having the pets adopted. Every week, we have been successful in having these beautiful pets adopted. Thank you. Mr. Clerk? We're now going to call the roll.
Alakon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Lavonch, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zion, Garcetti, ten members present and a quorum. Miss President?
Thank you. First item of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Okay, move by you, Mr. Garcetti. Seconded by Mr. Rosendahl.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weezer and Mr. Alakon.
Miss President, do you wish to take up public comment at this time?
Let's run through the agenda first.
Items one through six are street lighting district items, notice for public hearing, and there is a request to continue items one and three to Tuesday, July 31st.
Without objection, continue those items.
And that would leave council items two, four, five, and six.
Yes. Any items called special, members of the council? If not, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Items, and those are ordinances, and they do go over one week for a second reading.
Yes.
Item seven is a street lighting district item, notice for public hearing. Council should continue the hearing in ordinance to August 10th.
Without objection, continue to August 10th.
Items eight through 21 are items which public hearings have been held.
Any specials on those items? No specials, eight through 21? Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Items 22 through 31 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration, and I understand there's a substitute motion in the works on item 30.
Thirty, hold thirty. The other items, open and close the public hearing. Any specials on those items? Twenty-two to 31, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Those are approved. Ordinances will go over one week on that matter. And next items?
On the continuation agenda, item 32 is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Anyone wishing to call special? Mr. Reyes?
I apologize, Council President. Could we call 25 and 26 special? Just pass me up.
Well, we consider 25 and 26. Yes, Mr. Reyes.
Please, thank you, sir.
Please, we'll do that after. Let's get this done, then we'll come through to that. Thirty-two, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 33 is the closed session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Hold that on the desk, please.
Miss President, do you wish to recess the regular meeting and take up the special meeting?
Yes. Please call the roll.
Alakon, Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weezer, Lavonch, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zion, Garcetti, ten members present and a quorum.
Thank you. First order?
So, one item agenda. Item 34 is an item for which public hearing has not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Open and close the public hearing. Anyone wishing to call special? Mr. Rosendahl? Okay, we'll call that special. Thank you. Please open the roll on the other.
Actually, that is the only item. Do you wish to continue that over to the regular meeting and adjourn this meeting?
Yes. Yes, please do that.
Go back to the regular meeting. Do you wish to reconsider items 25 and 26 at this point?
For Mr. Reyes. And 32, for Mr. Reyes, those three items. Open the roll on the reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Thank you. We'll call it special. And we have one more presentation. And Mr. Garcetti, I will be doing the presentation. Thank you. I'd like to recognize Mr. Zion.
Well, there are heroes in this world, unsung heroes. I'm going to call the first one up. Mr. Michael Karsh and his wife, Virginia, please come forward. Virginia, you've been in the background too long. Come on up here. Come on up here. Michael Karsh, retiring after 31 years of faithful and excellent service to the City of Los Angeles. You've been behind him for all these years, and now you're going to be up front. Michael is well-known both in and out of City Hall for his years of coordinating the city's state legislative program and lobbying efforts in Sacramento. A very quiet voice, but a very effective individual. Demonstrated a high level of professionalism, diplomacy, and competence focused on getting the job done in the most expeditious and adventurous way. Began his career in the City of Los Angeles July 12, 1976. Has a legislative analyst, Office of Chief Legislative Analyst. Supported the city council's intergovernmental relations committee for many years, coordinated and supervised staff efforts relating to the city's intergovernmental relations efforts. Coordinated the city's relations with other local, state, and federal government entities, responsible for coordinating the adoption of city legislative policies and support and sponsorship positions for legislation in Sacramento. Also supervised staff efforts supporting the council's transportation committee, Rules and Elections Committee, Arts, Parks, Health, and Aging Committee, and the Education and Neighborhood Committee. Also involved, on behalf of the city, with legislative advocacy groups such as the League of California Cities, Independent Cities Association, Contract Cities Association, County of Los Angeles, Judicial Procedures Commission, Southern Californers Association of Governments, Westside Cities Council of Governments, South Bay Cities Council of Governments, and many other advocacy organizations, often attending numerous late-night and weekend meetings to represent the intergovernmental interests of the City of Los Angeles. That's where he was all those nights, Virginia. He was coordinating business for the City of LA. Always went, where's he going 12 o'clock at night? He's working for the city. Prior to his city service, now this is the interesting part about Michael that people really don't know about, was a legislative analyst for Security Pacific Bank from 1973 to 76, and was the first to serve in that capacity, covered both state and federal legislation impacting the bank industry. From '71 to '72, was a teaching and research analyst in the American government and criminal justice, the Department of Political Science at the University of Texas in El Paso. From '66 to '71, served the United States Air Force, Office of Special Investigations, where he reached the rank of captain and served as commander of two units. He carried credentials as an OSI, special agent, and conducted counterintelligence, counterespionage, and criminal investigations. Michael Karsh, a spy. The quiet man. He never knew that. He is fluent in several foreign languages, having achieved logistics rating in German, French, and Spanish. Michael Preston Karsh was born 1944 in Fulton, Missouri, grew up in Columbia, Missouri. Received his master of arts degree in political theory from the University of Texas, El Paso in '72. Received his bachelor of arts degree in political science from the University of California, Berkeley. At Berkeley in 1966, that's when Peoples Park and protests and anti-government. And you were a special agent for the government. I love it. Michael Karsh would not be who he is today without his support and love of his wonderful wife and true partner, Virginia Parrish, whom he met and married while on air force duty in Pasadena, California. What air force duties in Pasadena, I'll never know. But he was there. They have a family of six children and a goddaughter, a grand total of seven wonderful children and 10 grandchildren. Michael Karsh's record of service to the city epitomizes what is the best of the CLA's office as well as what is best in the employees who serve the City of Los Angeles, and his record should serve as a model for all to strive to provide excellent and faithful service to the city and people of Los Angeles. And Michael, on behalf of the mayor and my colleagues, we have a resolution commending your many, many years of service, and when I read the information, which you have done not only within the City of Los Angeles for 31 years, but your previous activities and experience, I was absolutely astonished. But I know you're from independent cities, all the activities, the Judicial Procedures Commission, and it's a real pleasure, and it's sad to see you go, but I know that you're not going to retire and go fishing, retire and watch the pigeons in the park. You've got a very active future ahead of you, and I wanted to wish you, on behalf of my colleagues, the best because you well deserve. You've been a very dedicated, loyal person to the people of Los Angeles and a silent hero with all the activities you've done throughout your life, and your wonderful wife, who's been in the background all these years there. Congratulations.
And we have some.
Mr. Miller.
And just before that, Mr. Miller, if I may recognize Ms. Perry to say a few words as well?
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and Michael, sorry to see you go, but I understand the level and quality and the amount of service that you provided to the City of Los Angeles is extraordinary. You were instrumental in navigating the very complex waters of representing the city's interests and expanding the size of the Board of the Air Quality Management District, and as you and I both know, that was no easy task, but you did it with a calm and cool manner, with a lot of intelligence and diplomacy, and I think that's a hallmark of who you are, and that is a skill and an art that is hard to find these days, and I just want you to know that I appreciate personally what you have done, and I know we will all miss you very much.
I'll be very brief. Michael is a huge loss to the office, and I think my whole staff is here to wish him well. He's certainly become an institution, and he is the definition of what the CLA should be. A man of character, a man of competence, and incredible knowledge and skills, and he did it all without an ounce of attitude or arrogance, and that's exactly, I think, what the CLA needs to be. So, I know on behalf of the whole office, Michael, congratulations. Enjoy your retirement, enjoy your time with Virginia, and please, don't be a stranger. We want to see you around.
Well, thank you very much. It's been a wonderful career. I've certainly enjoyed every year of it. I started out in Missouri. My father taught American Government, and one of the things that he did in the late '50s was run for city council in Columbia, Missouri. Now, that's no comparison to the City of LA, but nevertheless, he ran successfully for three two-year terms, and he brought the experience, practical experience of being a council member into the classroom when he taught his classes at the same time. So, I took that to heart. I studied American Government, and I wound up working for a city council for 30-some years. I also went to Berkeley, and there I met one of the council members, one of the future council members, Jackie Goldberg, although she was on the other side of the political spectrum from where I was, and although she didn't know me, I knew who she was. I then met my wife, and she brought a lot of political experience also. Her father was the Comandante de la Plaza in Punta Arenas, Costa Rica. That's the second-largest city in Costa Rica. It's on the Pacific coast. It's on the Pacific Coast. And he went from there to the governor of Punta Arenas Province, and from there, he was elected to the National Congress. Her family was a frequent friend of all of the presidents of Costa Rica, at least at that time, Ricardo Jimenez, Don Leon Cortez, and Pepe Figueres, and others. Rodrigo Carrasso, who has visited Los Angeles, was also a close friend of the family. So, with this experience from her side and from my side, oh, and her cousin in Nicaragua, she became president of that country, Violeta Barrios de Chamorro. She was elected and overthrew the Sandinistas. Well, didn't overthrow. She was elected in a free election that rejected the Sandinistas. Of course, one of them is back right now. Nevertheless, with this political background, it was very stimulating to work for you. I've enjoyed working with each one of you. I've enjoyed the work in Sacramento, and I wish you very good luck, and I shall enjoy my retirement, but I will be around. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine, and thank you, Mr. Karsch, for your incredible service to the people of Los Angeles. We have truly enjoyed having the honor of serving with you as well, and good luck in your retirement. This will always be home for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. I have two other presentations, and we're going to take photos in a moment with Michael Karsch and his family. My next two presentations, if we can have Consuela come join me, please, since you're the one who got this going. Consuela Mack. We have two presentations for, one's for Shannon Brown. Shannon, please come forward. Shannon Brown is being honored for her compassion and dedication to the disabled community and her support for Operation Confidence. Operation Confidence, and we've recognized Operation Confidence before here in Los Angeles City Council, is a nonprofit organization that provides employment-related services for people with physical disabilities. Shannon is an employee of KTWV, The Wave. The Wave. And a community advocate. She has helped to raise over $8,000. $80,000. $80,000. $80,000 for nonprofit organizations throughout Los Angeles County and for the Breast Cancer Foundation. Contributed her time and talents to assist Operation Confidence with event planning strategies to raise money to support their daily operational needs. Shannon assisted Operation Confidence's positive redirection team to raise funds to go on the humanitarian trip to New Orleans, Louisiana, to help bring hope to the disabled community devastated by Hurricane Katrina. And we know the devastation to the people without disabilities. You can imagine the individual disabilities and going through that crisis with the hurricane. She is dedicated, serving the people of Los Angeles by providing organization with a minimum that raises, medium that raises, the awareness of community efforts and outreach. The city council joins the friends, coworkers of Shannon Brown in committing her for her support of Operation Confidence. We extend best wishes and continued growth and success. And Shannon, here is the resolution recognizing you for what you've done, signed by myself, the mayor, and the whole city family. And that is for you, for what you've done, for others. And also, and we'll hear from Consuela and also Shannon in a moment, we're going to bring up Patrick Hanson. Patrick Hanson, come on forward, please. He's also being honored for his compassion, dedication to the disabled community, for his support of Operation Confidence. How tall are you?
6'5".
6'5". I thought I was a tall guy. Operation Confidence, again, is a nonprofit organization that provides employment-related services for people with physical disabilities. We talk about disabilities. We talk about all types of physical disabilities, individuals in wheelchairs, individuals that are greatly handicapped, disabled. Patrick's the owner of Hanson Bakery with three locations in the communities of Tarzana, area that I serve, Los Angeles, and Beverly Hills, who has consistently won the Baker of the Year Award. Donated his time to help organizations such as Operation Confidence, the Scott Newman Foundation, the Ronald McDonald House, Make-A-Wish Foundation, and has helped feed many homeless people on Skid Row. Assisted Operation Confidence's positive redirection team to raise funds for their humanitarian trip to New Orleans, Louisiana, to bring hope to the disabled community devastated by Hurricane Katrina. Also dedicated himself to serving the people of L.A. and improving the quality of life. Again, we want to congratulate you, Patrick, for what you've done for Operation Confidence and the other folks that you help with your activities and efforts. And first, we're going to hear from Consuela, who's the president, the chairperson, the lady who gets things going in Operation Confidence in my district, where you're still active and getting people back on their feet, and also the recipient of that home makeover.
Yes, sir.
Who had make that happen for you, because you're a lady who gives, and you ask nothing in return. You just want to help other people.
And you're so kind.
Thank you, dear.
You've always been a friend.
Thank you, dear.
I just want to.
Consuela.
I want to just thank the mayor, the city council, Councilman Zine, for the support that the city has always given Operation Confidence. And I wanted to say that it's because of people such as Shannon Brown and Mr. Hanson from Hanson's Bakery that is making it happen for lives to be changed through our organization. And I just want to thank you all for allowing us to come here today. And again, Shannon, thank you, my darling. Mr. Hanson, thank you so much for all of your support, and of course, thank you, city council. God bless you all.
Shannon.
Ms. Maggie said it's a privilege and an honor for us, as well as CBS and The Wave, to aid any nonprofit, and she has such a big heart. And as an organization, we had to have that greater, bigger heart to help her. So, it's a privilege just to be able to assist her in her fight to. In disability. Oh, man. It's just, it's just an awesome thing that she's able to go out here and not get paid for anything that she does. And I wish I could be out there with her daily, but I know that she's out there helping when no one else can. Thank you, Ms. Maggie.
I'm Patrick, and Sabine, his daughter. Come forward, please. You'll be with your daddy here. You're going to be a tall girl, too.
On behalf of the Hanson family, I would like to thank the council. We are four generations in the city of Los Angeles. We started in 1900. We've served several presidents, heads of state. We have federal, state, county, city of L.A. approval. I'm a graduate of several colleges, American Institute of Baking, and it's a tradition that has started back in Scandinavia, where we donated cakes and different things for people, and we didn't want to waste anything back then. And through grandfather, through grandfather, we started just helping people and donating our time and whatever we wanted to do. And.
They're there for us.
We're there for you. Anybody that wants to donate their time or food or anything, talk to Ms. Maggie, and they'll get ahold of me, because I've had to change my number, because I've donated too much time, taken away from my kids and stuff. And it doesn't take much to help people, you know? You can just show up at a race, a race MS, or, you know, we donate a lot to different McDonald's and I'm trying to think of the other one, the one on Washington, but that's a big one. And you show up there, and all you have to do is help kids, you know? You just, you just show up there and donate a little time, a little food, and, you know, it goes a long way. So, on behalf of the Hanson family, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, and I'd like to recognize Mr. Weezer for a presentation as well.
This, today's presentation, my quick presentation here. Can I invite my intern, Jaclyn Kuwasa, please? This wasn't scheduled today, but she's a little shy. Jaclyn has been entertaining with my office this past summer. She's done a wonderful job, and I just wanted to send her off today on her last day. She has focused mostly on gang violence issues in CD-14 and youth development issues. She's a constituent of CD-14 at the community of Garbanza, and she's going back now to finish her second year for her master's in public policy program at Pepperdine University. Jaclyn, thank you so much. On behalf of the CD-14 residents, you did a wonderful job, and I wanted to recognize that, recognize you for that today in council. Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer, and congratulations. If we can return to public comment now. We have a number of speaker cards, over 25 of them, I believe, on the issue of safe access and in speaking with some of them to make sure that we can get to some other public comments as well. We've identified three folks who would like to speak on behalf of the group that's here. I'd like to first call Don Duncan forward. He'll be followed by Michelle McKay. Good morning.
Good morning, President Garcetti, council members. My name is Don Duncan. I'm a resident of Los Angeles and the Southern California Coordinator for Americans for Safe Access. I stood here two days ago and spoke with this council, and while I was speaking to you, the DEA was raiding as many as 10 medical marijuana collectives in Los Angeles at the exact moment that this council was in session, calling for restraint and calling for the federal legalization of medical cannabis through the Hinchey-Roybacher Amendment. I want you to know that today, 200 protesters marched here from the federal building, not because they're angry with you, but because they were proud of you. They were proud of the compassionate stance that you took and the principled statements you made regarding medical cannabis two days ago. And I hope that this council will remain steadfast in that support for safe access. Your voices were not unheard in Washington, D.C., and today I have a statement signed by nine of your colleagues in the United States House of Representatives, following the Hinchey-Roybacher vote yesterday. "On the federal level," they write, "we have championed an effort that would prevent the DEA from using funds that would interfere with medical marijuana laws to the 12 states that have passed such laws. To us, it is unconscionable that federal resources are being used to arrest seriously ill patients, their caregivers, or others who are simply abiding by state laws. We will continue to be resolved in our commitment to end federal interference with these states' medical marijuana laws. To us, this is not only an issue of compassion, but also one of states' rights and of common sense." This statement is signed by Maurice Hinchey from New York, Sam Farr from California, Ron Paul from Texas, Barney Frank from Massachusetts, Steve Cohen from Tennessee, Barbara Lee, Lynn Woolsey, Loretta Sanchez from California, and our second favorite Republican, Dana Roybacher from right here in California. I want to thank you again for your principled stand and to let you know that your voices were heard in Washington, D.C. And while the amendment did not pass, we will continue that effort to fight for safe access, and I hope you'll continue to stand behind the victims of Wednesday's actions here in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris Duncan. Michelle McKay is our next speaker, and after Michelle McKay will be Chris Fusco. Fusco.
Good morning. I'd like to first say thank you for your support that you've given us. It's appreciated that you guys are helping us to come along and try and make this movement safe for everybody. I am a manager of a club, HCC. We were in compliance with the DEA's requests through their letters to be shut down. They gave us until the end of August to close our doors. We opted to close a month early at the end of July. We were then raided. They came in, they arrested me, they put me in cuffs, they held shotguns and Glocks to my face. They took me downtown. They detained me for over four hours. They completely unnecessarily, rudely came in. We were in compliance. We were fully ready to close. We were giving them everything they wanted, and they still came in, and they did this to us. I am a patient. I support other patients. I support the need for safe access. I am not the type of person that needs to be brutalized. I do not need to be arrested or put in metal cuffs. I do not need to be detained for over four hours. I did not need to be harassed like this. I am a patient in California. We have voted to have this legal, and I find it to be very ridiculous that our money is being spent to come after people like me and our patients. I hope that in the future, you guys can see that this is completely ridiculous, that there are people like my father who has cancer and my grandmother who has angina, and they use as well. And I think that it's, you know, important that we continue to make this safe for everyone and keep people like me out of cuffs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Chris Fusco.
Council members, my name is Chris Fusco, and I work for a medical cannabis dispensing collective in the city of Los Angeles, and I have never been prouder to say that than today. Councilmember Zine came out and joined us in front of City Hall to say, "Medical cannabis is here to stay in Los Angeles. The DEA cannot shake down collectives. They cannot do this in our city and not expect a resistance." And I would like to thank Councilmember Garcetti, Councilmember Rosendahl, Councilmember Weezer, Councilmember Alcoron, and Councilmember Han. I would like to personally thank you, as a patient in this city, for standing up for us. You've been so modest. You have been so modest in the stance you've taken, and I want to let you know, it means the world to us as patients, to see you people standing up next to us. It means the world to us. Dennis Packer of the Los Angeles Police Department was wearing a DEA uniform raiding the collective I work for. There is footage of him on YouTube right now, an LAPD detective, Dennis Packer, asset forfeiture specialist, works out of the Central Division, wearing a DEA uniform. At the exact same time, every single one of you are standing up, saying to the LAPD, "This is a waste of your resources. Don't go after patients. Don't go after providers. Please." I appreciate the support. We need you to tell Dennis Packer this is unacceptable. Tell Dennis Packer he cannot work for the DEA while he's being paid by my tax dollars and by the tax dollars you so accurately appropriate. We do not want LAPD going after dispensing collectives. Tell Dennis Packer he cannot wear a DEA uniform in Los Angeles. And again, from the bottom of my heart, from every patient in this city, thank you, Councilmember Rosendahl, Han, Garcetti, Zine, Councilmember Reyes for moving this through plum, and by God, we need a moratorium, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments today. I wasn't sure, we had some other cards that were on other issues, but I wasn't sure if Mr. Michelle McFarland was here for the access issue or for something else. Is he here? Okay, if not, Reverend Glenn Rowland, were you here for the same issue as well? You were, okay. Can I, we hold on just for a second? I just want to make sure we get to the other issues real quick. In Van Nuys, we have Sharon Brewer, who is next, and then Arnold Sacks here in Council Chambers will follow that. Ms. Brewer?
Oops.
Good morning.
Oops, I'm offside.
Sorry, sorry. We'll try to work on the camera angle. Go ahead.
That's all right. I'm used to being abused. Sharon Brewer. Number one, Encino Neighborhood Council, June 28, 2007, election challenges update. None because Tom Soon from Dunn didn't show up for Encino's meeting on Wednesday, July 25, 2007. Encino's Neighborhood Council still has not physically posted the nine election challenges. Challenge deadline was July 7, 2007. Two, Recreation and Parks. Questions regarding status on the construction and installation of a universal playground at Lake Balboa. Emails, three to Chuck Richmond, Valley Region, one to Mike Fee, Downtown Construction, one to Ron Berkowitz, Superintendent, three to Tessa, Mayor's Office, asking for her help to get a response from Recreation and Parks. One month after the initial email to Chuck Richmond, Valley Region, "The only thing I know is what I see at Lake Balboa Play Area." Recreation and Parks awarding contracts or permits. Please hold Recreation and Parks Commissioners accountable for awarding contracts to individuals who have been known to file or have threatened to sue the city in the past if they didn't get their way. One individual has number three in front of City Council today. Please require Recreation and Parks to immediately put out an RFP for the Mobile Food Concession for the Spolota Basin that should have been put out back in November 2005, one and a half years ago. This contract is presently being held by the same individual in a closed session item. There is also another concession at Lake Balboa that an RFP should have been put out in November of 2005, and they're on a month-to-month. There needs to be some kind of oversight when it comes to Wrecker Parks, when they issue permits and, oh, thank you. Issue permits and the contracts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Brewer. Arnold Sacks is our next speaker here in Council Chambers, and then Pachis Goffney or Pasis Goffney will be after that.
Good morning, council members. Arnold Sacks, thank you very much. I stand before you to apologize for somewhat, for getting on your case about the construction authorities, because I went to MTA board meeting yesterday and was presented with some information showing that there was a foothill construction authority somewhat authorized around approximately 2004, 2005. But additionally, I found some other information that I'd like to bring forward to the council. The Foothill Construction Authority is 24 miles, $1.37 billion, approximately $60 million a mile. The Expo Gold Line construct, the Expo line is 8.5 miles at $640 million, approximately $75 million. The Gold Line was 14 miles, $450 million, approximately $33 million per mile. The East Side Extension, without a construction authority, is six miles for $898 million, for $150 million per mile. The Green Line, approximately three miles, no construction authority. The other average that I'd like to point out is that, from The other average that I'd like to point out is that from the start of when these construction authorities are authorized, is approximately five to six years from complete to date of completion for the project. That means the Green Line not being authorized, and the Transportation Department yesterday having a meeting about expanding LAX and for new terminals for the new airlines, the new airplanes that will arrive. We're looking at a Green Line maybe being built somewhere around 2015 approximately. Additionally, there was a discussion about a bus line, a bus lane only on Wilshire Boulevard. I would appreciate it if a discussion was included about a light rail line instead of the mayor's proposal for a subway which will cost over $5 billion. Light rail line will approximately be about $90 million. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sacks. Mr. Goffney?
Good morning. So how do you pronounce your first name?
Paces.
Paces, excuse me, Paces.
Morning, Mr. President.
Good morning.
And the City Council and City Councilmembers. I came here about 90 days ago and spoke in front of City Council, asking for your guys' support in getting contracts to hire ex-cons who come out of prison, who have problems getting jobs. And our organization, Econ Opportunities, has developed a workforce program that governs these people and deals with different housing that deal with ex-cons. And I emailed you guys, sent you new letters, I received nothing. So I've actually just went back to work doing my politicking and taking care of my paperwork and moving forward. And at this time now, after dealing with Mr. Garcetti, I don't know if the people in your office have even discussing with you, but I've had to turn into racial discrimination, citizens complaining against your office for hanging up on me and laughing at me with my secretary listening, and you have no black staff inside your office. So I can only take one look at that and say, you know, it's got to be a racial issue in there, because as far as I'm concerned, from reading the papers about the little girl who got killed and nothing being done in that neighborhood and the Harbor City area and so much and so forth, I don't have that much time, that I'm just really here though to try to get to work with you to get these contracts in each one of the individual city or the city council members. I can bond up to $200 million. I got two of the biggest construction companies in California in the world, basically, and that build prisons and different stuff like that, and we just want to sit down and talk with you to put together the at-risk contracts so we can actually start bonding those and working on those and by 2009 hire about 10,000 people who would normally run around committing crime. I work daily, twice a week, out of the parole offices, giving these guys a reform program called Crimonon that's out of Africa. I've been doing this for five years. I've never came forth before asking for anything because I believe in hard work, but at this time, we need more support from you guys more than we do hard work, because ordinarily to get the contracts in that circle, it's hard to get the contracts based on the buddy system and how it works to get contracts.
Thank you. We, just to direct the record, not only do I have African-American members of my staff, we have referred, I believe, you to PV Jobs, which is a place that is, sorry, sir, we can't do a dialogue, but I do want to give you some information. PV Jobs, and we've worked very closely with the MBOC system here, which is both the City Council and the mayor. We have about 45% of the school contracts that are being done for the district construction as well. It's another good place to look, and we'll continue to recommend to you any places that we can help. I know Mr. Parks and Ms. Perry have worked very much with PV Jobs and others on some of our workforce training dollars to make sure that that goes to all communities, so we appreciate your comments today. We still do have a few minutes left in public comment. I just want to go through the list of some of the Safe Access folks that are here. Reverend Glenn Rowland, if you'd like to come forward now, we still have a couple more minutes left for some comments.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, City Council. Ms. Han, good to see you again. I am a minister with the Universal Life Ministries. We deal with the spiritual aspects of cancer patients, hospice, people that are in need. I am not big on the politics, I don't speak very well, but I have watched in the last two weeks, the DEA trample people in wheelchairs. I've watched them absolutely violate city law. They come in, they use our police officers that are paid for out of our taxes, out of my parishioners' taxes. They come down, they attack people like Michelle. She weighs 90 pounds, soaking wet with rocks in her pocket. I'm an ex-Navy SEAL, I've deposed two dictators in my lifetime. It's where we're headed. Mayor, I would like for the city to ask the mayor for a proclamation that says that LAPD will not assist the DEA in closing down medical cannabis dispensing. It's tried and clear. We will not assist the DEA. They have their office, they have their facilities, but we will not assist them, we will not do traffic control, we will not do crowd control. Now we're being civilly disobedient, but remember, in 1775, it was 8 to 262 at the bridge at Lexington. Thank you.
Thank you. We have time for one more speaker. We have time for one more speaker, Richard Kearns, if you'd like to come forward.
Good morning, my name is Richard Kearns. I'm a poet activist and new media citizen journalist, alive with AIDS for more than 20 years in Los Angeles. I'm here this day to express my joy and admiration and gratitude over your courageous actions in passing the moratorium on ICO for medical cannabis and for supporting us. But I wanted to touch on some broader issues that defy simple comment for or against your work. I suggest to you that we are watching the evolution of local self-governing community bodies in the medical cannabis community. Self-government the way Socrates and Jefferson would understand it. Self-government, intergovernment, which Socrates and Jefferson would tell us is the only firm foundation for successful community government. I mean LA-style stakeholder government, representing citizens who live, work, play, and stay alive in our community, our neighborhood. I mean the startup of self-governing community councils that include stakeholder-style representation of medical cannabis community members that could include patients, caregivers, clinic operators, clinic staffers, growers, advocates, and non-patient reps. These councils could act in partnership and advise the City Council as a kind of neighborhood council in the process of coming up with a permanent set of regulations for safe access to medical cannabis in Los Angeles. These councils could also implement, maintain standards of medical cannabis community practice that could mediate disputes. Outer government without the foundation of self-government is tyranny. Community government founded on self-government is the only way to go. I would be very eager to consult with the Office of Neighborhood Empowerment, I believe the person's name I remember is John Lewis, to help realize this vision. Please help me make that contact and set up a meeting. Thank you very much for your support and consideration. I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to read the names into the records of other people who are here today as we move on to our agendized items, but we want to thank you for coming down. Mr. Michelle McFarland was here, Sarah Armstrong, Lauren Rothman, Brett Stone, Doge Konte, Lenny Fisher, Anne Ramirez, Sarah Slotkin, Corey Escalante, Escalante, excuse me, Morgan Manlopig, Barry Kramer, no name but Safe Access for MMN, Patrick Duff, and Nicole McCloflin. Thank you all very much, and we appreciate your kind words today, and we appreciate you being here. If we can go to the first item called special, Mr. Clerk.
Item 25, called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes, we have item number 25 before us.
Thank you, Council President. I know we're short on time, so I'll make it really fast. On item 25, I just had one question, and we have the staff here. I just want to make sure that as we go through this process of historic resources survey, that we allow for the system to connect with economic demographic data so that we know how to focus any kind of resources should modern income or low-income folks who have historic buildings need support in dealing with those kinds of improvements, and can we do that? It's really a yes or no answer.
Yes, this is a technical position, a data manager position, but this person will be linking our historic resources data to ZEMUS, which is our geographic information system, that does have a good deal of information that will assist us in that type of planning. We've also received now a grant from the state to make certain that the survey program as a whole is reaching out to the entirety of our community to translate our survey materials into multiple languages and to do considerable outreach.
Thank you. Given the plight of many folks who are living in historic areas of our city, much displacement is going on, and how we can support all of the income groups in cities is important, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Press, your own vote.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. We can prepare the roll on this item and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Before we go to the next item, my apologies to Ms. Konte, Deje Konte, who is not here on the Safe Access issue for public comment.
Well, I do have an issue, and I'm not a member of the other organization. I do want to thank you all for your good words on Wednesday and in support of medical cannabis, and most importantly, what I want to address to you today is making sure you have a memorandum of non-compliance between LAPD and DEA. I stand before you, very scraped and battered and bruised, because the LAPD was forced to play the bodyguards for the DEA at the raid I participated in, and so I'm urging you, please, as soon as possible, there needs to be a memorandum of non-compliance. I've conducted other acts of civil disobedience in West Hollywood, where the West Hollywood sheriffs shake their head at the DEA and said, "If you want these protesters out of here, you're going to have to do the dirty work yourself." And instead, 30 officers surrounded me, there's pictures of it online, and I'll have more of three officers who had to carry me off, and they should never, ever, ever be put in the position where the LAPD has to manhandle a woman on behalf of the DEA. Thank you.
Thank you very much, we appreciate your testimony. Item 30, the amending motion has gone forth, so why don't we go ahead on that item? If we can please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved. Next item will be 26, called special by Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Any staff here for item 26? There's some, I think, important questions. Colleagues, this item was weighed out of committee because of time issues, but this is the AB 939, which is state mandate for diversion of solid waste from landfills. And essentially, we're aware that the city has benefited from that process, given how the commercial and private sector, in their willingness to do a great job, they've been able to see the advantage in that. But the city, I believe, has to begin to move up in its capacity and its abilities and deficiencies. So, and given that, I just have a couple of questions. Who is signing off on the revised contract that includes a new AB 939 language?
It'll actually be the city attorney that will sign off on the final contract language.
So they will, that, we will be certain that our goals are being met based on standards set within that contract so that the performance is actually up to par of what we anticipate as a city?
That's correct. That is why, in our recommendation, we indicated that we wanted the contract language amended to ensure the AB 939 compliance.
In terms of the monitoring of these contracts, its performance, we'll be monitoring as they're performing, are we going to be looking at it once it's done? How have we structured the quality control in its performance?
Go ahead.
We understand the street services would be doing the monitoring continuously, they would be receiving quarterly and annual reports as to what the contractors are doing as far as the percentage has been recycled and how it meets the goals.
So to be clear, the street services will be monitoring this program?
Yes.
Now, we have very high trash areas that, with reason, due to the fact that we have many people living in one area, and an infrastructure that's overtaxed, especially in and around downtown, east of downtown, and just around downtown area, if you see a map, it's very obvious where the trash comes from, because of the number of people that live there. I'm not saying they're dirty people or they're trashy people, it's just that we have allowed folks to live in certain places and in others, we haven't. But bottom line is, how could the council office be informed of the performance of these contractors and affecting our respective districts?
I think that request could be made to street services that the quarterly and other interim reporting that they receive be done on a council-district basis and make that information available to the council offices.
I would very much appreciate that, and perhaps look at how we implement our programs to make sure the trash is being picked up, the bulky items are being picked up, given the number of people that live in those locations. We tend to overlook or not address that important issue, and that's something I would hope we can fold in, given the volume that's generated because of the density.
Yeah, we're happy to have that conversation with street services, and then perhaps we could respond with correspondence to the council directly on that item.
Very much appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Go ahead and open the roll on this item, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
Item 32, called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes, item number 32 is before us, and we have, we've had a public hearing on this, is that right, or it's not yet held?
Public hearing has been held on this item.
Okay, we do have two public speaking cards, Mr. Reyes, just as a point of information, but we have had the public hearing on it, so either way, whatever you'd like.
Yes, I understand we've had the public hearing, but we do have appellants who have recommended, while they have a position to make, and we have responses from the city attorney. So I'm trying to move this as quick as possible, so perhaps we can have the city attorney come to the table?
Sure.
And we can perhaps hear from the appellate?
Okay.
And that way, we can get the responses from the city attorney?
Okay.
And through that, we can understand what's before us.
Daniel Wright would be our first speaker, and then Ronald Cargill would be our second. Mr. Wright, if you'd like to come forward?
Yes, we'll ask the appellants to speak first?
Okay.
And we'll have the attorneys respond?
Okay.
For the sake of time.
Yeah.
I don't want to lose quorum, that's why I want to push this.
Daniel Wright, 467 Queen Boulevard, I don't count a quorum in the council chamber at the present time. I don't see Councilmember Weezer, and I think another council member may not be here.
Yeah, I know that one of them just went to the restroom, we'll make sure that they're sitting in their seat. Hold on one second. Hold on one second. If there's anything you'd like to say in the meantime, Mr. Reyes, we're going to get them and have them come forward.
Okay, just kind of a context, this is a case in which we're dealing with a residential unit on a hillside in the Mount Washington area, and there's concern as to how the city responded to the MND, the language that occurred as a result of the process before Plum and after Plum, and essentially, there are issues being raised by the appellate and how the city perceived this project and how it made its decisions, and I believe we have the members of the Plum Committee now at their chairs. Mr. Wright?
Go ahead, please. As a fair hearing matter, colleagues, just to remind you, so could please direct our attention to Mr. Wright? Please go ahead.
Thank you very much. We have a handout that we've given to all council members as well, and I would direct your attention to the staff report, which is attached, which was the staff report given at Plum, which specifically recommended that all of the project approvals that were made in reliance on the deficient mitigated negative deck be voided. At the hearing, staff from Planning Department rose and verbally said, "We're withdrawing our recommendation to void these approvals, and instead, we're asking that you hold it in abeyance or suspend it," which is not consistent with California Environmental Quality Act law. Essentially, any decision made with a deficient mitigated negative deck is void, and the problem is, is that the item, recommendation number three in the staff recommendation on the agenda, is not an item that was voted on at Plum. So essentially, you have also before you today a report that does not accurately represent what happened at Plum, and if you vote to approve it today, I believe you'll also violate the Brown Act. So I think you have two options. One, send us back to Plum so it can be exposed to public comment to try to work this issue out, or number two, which we recommended originally, is to go ahead and adopt the staff report as originally submitted to Plum, which in accordance with California Environmental Quality Act law recommends that these project approvals be voided. You cannot have a correction of this problem unless you send it all the way back to the original decision-makers. Right now, your recommendation is to go to the East LA Planning Commission, that is not legally adequate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Ronald Cargill will be our next speaker.
On behalf of the applicant, my name is Ron Cargill, Ronald Cargill. We are in agreement with the staff report, we have no objection We have no objection to the motion as recommended, and we believe that the issue is a narrow issue that has to do with the environmental impacts and not with the overall decision of the application. So, we're in agreement with suspending the application and suspending the decision pending completion of the environmental document and then adoption of the approval with the additional environmental measures that are identified. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Council President. Again, we're seeing an interpretation of how we're conducting our business with the land use laws that are applicable to this case, so I can ask the city attorneys if they can guide us through the actual amendment that I believe addresses some level of resolution.
Well, Peter Gutierrez, Senior Assistant City Attorney, I think your proposed motion is an appropriate way to deal with the issue. So, I mean, that would be our recommendation.
In terms of the, Mr. Wright's assertions, in our approach, does it legally have a bearing in terms of being able to come to a solution and suspending the case so that we can review the narrowness of the issues being raised?
Well, I think there's a bit of a disagreement there because he's asking that the entitlements be voided, but I think it's more accurate to view this as those entitlements have never actually become final. So, in a sense, we're just rolling back. We're going back to take a second look, and we wouldn't void something that has not, in essence, become final because without the environmental document, the underlying environmental document for the entitlement, having gone through the entire administrative process, then I would say that the entitlements were not actually final yet.
So, the amendment before the council today is to allow for that level of analysis by setting aside our decision and narrowly focusing on the issues that have been raised?
That's correct, and we think that's appropriate.
Thank you. Unless my colleagues have any question, I would move to support the motion before us and have the city attorney's office do its job in breaking down these issues based on what's being questioned and address those concerns and have a recommendation from the Plum Committee.
And we'll work on planning on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this item? Mr. Alcock?
I just have a question. Would that require the report to be submitted in closed session, or if it's, I'm just concerned the potential here is that we would be faced with litigation.
But it doesn't require a closed session report. I mean, there's always the potential for litigation when there's a dispute over a land use matter, but at this point, I don't see a need for a closed session report.
Okay, I raised the issue, but I think you might want to contemplate that. I believe that if your analysis might present a strategy for us to understand how to proceed in a legal fashion, I think that it should be done in closed session. But, you know, I'm not a lawyer, so, but I would...
Okay. We'll certainly consider that.
I've seen a few things, and I just don't know why we would want to present this kind of discussion in the public realm. I'm just curious about potential jeopardy.
Thank you. Thank for that concern.
Okay. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this item? Not, we can prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay. That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 34 was called special by Councilmember Rosendahl.
Mr. Rosendahl, item number 34 is before us.
I think he wanted to continue it.
Okay. Item number 34. Mr. Rosendahl's staff here to let, tell us on item number 34.
We can do whatever he wants. He's out of the room.
Okay.
Thirty-four.
I believe our only other item is a closed session item.
Do you want to continue item 34?
Mr. Rosendahl, item number 34?
Yes.
Yes. See?
Mr. President, item 34, right now, I'm trying to figure out the story on it. The bottom line is this: We want Shanghai and Los Angeles to have a connection. We obviously want to be competitive with Seattle, Chicago, and Dallas, which are other cities in the mix, okay? I've just been told that August 2nd is the cutoff date for submission of an application for it. Part of my concern is, it has not gone through the Airport Commission, it has not been vetted in a discussion, but I strongly believe we need to talk about an Ontario connection where the inland empire has a large Chinese community. We could do, well, I'm just worried about August 2nd as a cutoff date. Next week, can we, if that's the fact. I just heard that just this second. I don't know enough of the story, and I don't want to stop Los Angeles from being one of the competitive routes for this, but it's come in as it's come in, and it's unclear. And at this point of the discussion, I want, I want Los Angeles to be appointed, so I'm conflicted about continuing it if August 2nd is a cutoff. I can't get anybody from the airport, Lawa, to answer any questions. I have a lobbyist here that represents United, and that's the level of where we're at.
Actually, I...
We have two meetings before the 2nd, Tuesday is July 31st, and Wednesday, as a point of information, is August 1st.
So, we have a council meeting prior to?
To August 2nd, and we have two.
Great. Then if we can continue it to that date before so that we can still be in the mix.
Okay. So, any objection to continuation?
No.
Nobody objects to continuing it? We'll continue until Tuesday, July 31st?
Thank you.
Okay. So ordered. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
That would leave the closed session item.
Okay. We are now, in accordance with California state law, be taking up a legal matter in closed session. We will come back in open session to vote publicly on anything that requires us to do so. And we, so if we can please clear the council chambers, and we will take up item 33. We're back in open session now. We have continued this item that was before us until Tuesday without objection. If I can, next order of business, please.
Council has motions for posting referral?
Those are posted and referred.
Desk is clear.
Okay. Can I please ask for names of individuals we are adjourning today in memory of? Ms. Han?
Adjourned for Lucille, Luanne, Lucan.
Okay. Mr. Weezer?
Pablo Salas Renovato.
Thank you. Ms. Perry?
Bostick and Mary Ann Ruth.
Thank you. Mr. Rosendahl?
David E. Pass, Ferg Egan, who was here the other day, Billy McClellan Senior, and Richard Dylan Henry.
Thank you. And lastly, I'd like to ask Kikui K. Owano be added to that. Please let the record reflect that the council adjourned in memory of these individuals. We are now no longer in a quorum, and we'd like to hear a little bit more about these individuals, starting first with Mr. Weezer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I moved to adjourn today in memory of Mr. Pablo Salas Renovato, who was tragically killed on July 17th in Guadalajara, Jalisco, Mexico, when he was struck by a motor vehicle while crossing a city street. He was 69. Mr. Renovato was a renowned cantera stone artisan from Guadalajara. He was the artisan who fabricated and assembled the cantera stone kiosk at Mariachi Plaza at Foil and First Street in Boa Heights. The kiosk was donated by the state of Jalisco to the city of Los Angeles. The donation of the kiosk was to honor and encourage Mariachi music and Mexican folklore in the city of Los Angeles. Mariachi Plaza has long been the gathering place for Mariachi musicians seeking work, and the kiosk that Mr. Salas fabricated and assembled has become an icon in the Boa Heights community. Soon, we will see the opening of the Gold Line rail line extension from downtown Los Angeles. Its first stop in Boa Heights is at First and Foil Street, and this kiosk stands very prominent in the plaza. Mr. Renovato is survived by his wife, Maria del Socorro Jaso de Salas, two sons, seven daughters, 29 grandchildren, and 13 great-grandchildren. He is also survived by his mother, Maria Irene Renovato de Salas.
Thank you, Mr. Weezer. Ms. Perry?
I'm fine with entering it as the record.
All right. Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm sad to say that David E. Pass, a firefighter for us in Station 63, was killed in an accident and leaves behind a wife and four children. I will be going to the memorial service tomorrow. He is quite a leader, and he committed himself to serving others quite often in their maximum hours of need. In addition to his four children, David Pass leaves behind a family of fellow firefighters who remember him for his outgoing personality, his wit, and his unique ability to contribute to both the morale of the station as well as to the professionalism of their duties. I would like to also mention Ferg Egan. He was just here a couple of weeks ago, colleagues, before the council, and there'll be a memorial service for him Sunday, the 29th, at the Village of Ed Gould Plaza in Los Angeles. And without going through all details, since we spoke quite a bit about him when he was here with us, and we all know all we have is the moment, Ferg Egan was a longtime fighter for HIV and AIDS issues. He died on the 7th at age 60 after a bout with liver cancer complicated by HIV and hepatitis C infections. He served as our AIDS coordinator of this city between 1993 and 2001. He opened doors for the funding of self-organized programs for women with AIDS, city authorization of and funding for needle exchange, housing for PWAs who might still be active drug users, and landmark study and intervention programs for gay men using crystal meth. There's a lot more to say, but we all were just with him, and there's been a lot written about him. May he rest in peace.
All members on that?
All members on that.
Thank you, all members. Billy McClellan Senior. Mr. McClellan just died a couple of days ago, and he's a veteran of the United States Navy. He lived a good life and a decent life that radiated nothing but dignity and self-respect, a loving father, an adored brother, a cherished husband, and a loyal friend. One of his children he leaves behind, city employee Dietrich Lynn, serves as a beautiful living legacy of the values, belief, and principles that would make everybody proud. And the last one, I might say, is a young man, just 17, Richard Dylan Henry. It was a devastating experience, obviously, for his parents and all of my colleagues in the 11th District, both Richard Dylan Henry, age 17, he was the beloved son of Harriet Zerinsky, and Stephen Henry, and an adored brother of Taylor. What made Dylan remarkable was his love of life, the zest for which he lived, and his infectious sense of fun. His larger-than-life personality and spirit touched everyone. He was an honest student at the Palisades High School, completed his junior year with more than a 4-0 average. Dylan often said his goal in life was to make the world a better place. By the forces of his personality and his action, he succeeded far beyond his years. Dylan's team spirit and enthusiasm was evident throughout his activism at Pali High. He played on the soccer team for three years, was a member of the surf club, and participated in tree drama competitions sponsored by the Drama Teachers Association. May he rest in peace.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Lastly, Kikui K. Owano, who is the mother of June Lagme of the mayor's office and formerly clerk's office, who was born March 27, 1924, died on July 21st. She was born in Yokohama, Japan, in March 22, 1924, and as a teenager, she worked as a typist at the American Horse Racing Track in Yokohama. On the onset of World War II, was one of those who witnessed the Doolittle bombing raid over Japan by the United States. Due to a shortage of food and severe hardships as the war progressed, Kikui enlisted as a typist with the Japanese military from 1942 to 46, and upon Japan's surrender, she was taken by Allied forces and imprisoned by British and Australian military forces until her release in 1946. In 1947, a war veteran, Edmund Lagme, met Kikui Owano in Japan, and they decided to get married, but permission was denied due to prejudicial army policy. And moreover, he was refused reenlistment, was sent back to the United States, and discharged in 1950. It took one and a half years for Edmund to save enough money to return to Japan and to his future wife. Upon his return to Japan, they were married in the U.S. consulate in Yokohama on July 27, 1952, and they settled in the Pico Union in Echo Park neighborhoods of Los Angeles 1955, and had a second child, Raymond, in 1958. In 2004, Edmund and Kikui celebrated their 50th wedding anniversary. I'm sure all members will join me as we adjourn in her memory. Thank you very much, colleagues. We will next meet on July 31st. That's Tuesday. I will not be here for two weeks. I'll look forward to seeing you back here after I fill my reserve duty for the United States Navy, and I'll look forward to seeing you for the last week before our August recess. Have a great weekend, and we will see you in a little bit.